FHWA is part of our environmental document. And I'll move it over to our newly appointed Steel County engineer, Paul Smolos.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and all the members. Thank you, Sean. I just want to say thank you very much, Sean and this council for all the support for this project. We've been significant partners here. We've been talking about this project for, what, thirty years now. Back in 2020, when we did our joint transportation plans, the county was kind of, the consensus was that we would take on this project and need the effort to make this happen sometime here soon. So in 2022, with that, the county hired WSP here to put together the feasibility study and the environmental documents there to start working towards this plan here. So with their work in the last couple of years here, we've reached a significant milestone, selecting a preferred alternative. I'll let them tell you more about that. So let me introduce to you our team here. We got Mary Goob here as our transportation pilot from WSP and Andrew Paulman, senior project manager on the project. So.
Welcome. Thank you very much, council members. So yeah, what we'll be doing, I was just going through a little bit of an update. Again, as Paul mentioned, we have reached a pretty significant milestone, getting FHWA on board at this point. So what I'll do is turn it over to Mary, then I'll be kind of coming in, talking about a few things with the design and kind of the next steps, and we'll open there.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So I'm going to walk through the process to where we're at now, which is the environmental preferred alternative. So we're going to go back in time just a little bit. In 2022 and 2023, the county went through a process to identify the preferred east side corridor route. Newer alternatives were evaluated, those are shown on the screen. And alternative three, which is shown in that pinkish-purpleish box, was identified as the preferred alignment. This information was shared with the public and comments were received during a meeting that was held in May of 2023. Next slide, please. After that open house, Steel County began working on a federal document called programmatic categorical exclusion, as well as a state document called an environmental assessment worksheet. That was in the spring and summer of 2023. During the fall of 2023, Steel County Federal Highway and the Minnesota Department of State Aid Office coordinated and determined that rather than that programmatic categorical exclusion, it would be a better idea to do what's called a non-programmatic categorical exclusion. The main difference is that rather than not being able to sign off on that programmatic categorical exclusion or catex, I'll switch to that shorter term, the non-programmatic form requires Federal Highway to sign off on the document and also for there to be some interim steps where Federal Highway ways in. Next slide, please. So this is a step of some of the, these are the current environmental steps that we're in. So steps one through three are tied to some of those Federal Highway approvals that I mentioned, also called concurrents points. The county has received concurrence on three main points from Federal Highway. The first is the project purpose and need. The second is the evaluation criteria that would be used, that were used to evaluate the alternatives under consideration, and then also the evaluation of alternatives itself. This first step, the project purpose and need, explains why the county is undertaking the project in the first place, discussing based on transportation needs. This purpose and need also limits the range of alternatives considered reasonable, prudent, and practical. The purpose of the east side corridor project is to improve connectivity of the county's transportation network and to meet near-term and future travel needs on the east side of the city, as well as nearby townships for all users. Primary needs for the project include addressing poor connectivity, meaning lack of effective connections between roads, addressing downtown congestion, as well as addressing a lack of connections to existing planned land uses. Secondary needs tied to the project are the need for improved sidewalks and trails to promote bicycling and walking. And then we also considered additional considerations, things like consistency with local plans and project costs. Step two, so Federal Highway did approve those, the criteria and measures that the county identified to evaluate alternatives. These criteria were based on the project purpose and need, as we also looked at certain social, environmental, and community needs. Step three was the point at which we evaluated alternatives and selected the preferred alternative. That was completed in August of, we completed the memo in August of 2022, 2024, and received concurrence from Federal Highway in September of 2024. Next steps include completing the state we're in, which is developing the state and federal environmental documents. That's anticipated, those documents are anticipated to be completed early next year. And we will also hold a public meeting when those documents are out for, that they have been published, and we'll also take comments on the environmental documents. We anticipate finalizing the environmental process in mid-2025. Next slide, please. So again, just to reiterate, in the spring of 2024, we got concurrence on those first two steps, so the project purpose and need and evaluation criteria. And then summer 2024, we developed alternatives and went forward with evaluating those alternatives. Alternatives that we looked at were essentially the same as what we looked at back in 2022, 2023. We did add in, when we were calculating impacts, we did add in the connection north of 26th Street, the connection up to Kenyon Road. We also included improvements that were our plan for 26th Street and 18th Streets, with some of those east and west trails. Next slide, please. There are two steps to the evaluation process that we undertook. The first is a fatal loss screening, and that was to determine whether or not these alternatives met the project purpose and need. Based on this evaluation, alternatives four and five, which are the farthest east alternatives, were removed from further consideration for not meeting vehicle mobility needs. Specifically what that means, travel times and trip lengths versus trips on those alternatives were found to take longer than today's conditions in many cases. Also, there was a contribution to downtown congestion for alternative five. It would, we also found that alternatives four and five did not support current land uses, nor did they support future, providing access to future land uses. Finally, bicycle travel would take longer, just as is what many would be willing to take if we were to have a trail along either alternative four or five. The second step of the evaluation process, for which we carry alternatives one, two, and three, we considered select social, economic, and environmental categories, as well as consistency with local plans and costs. Next slide, please. This is just a, not meant to be read, this is available if people wanted to get into this, but it's just a summary of the evaluation that we did for those social, environmental, and economic categories for alternatives one A, one B, one C, and then two and three. Next slide, please. This slide highlights some of the differences between the impacts that we found through the evaluation process. Starting off with residential and business relocations, alternative three was the only alternative that would not need alternative relocations. All of the alternative ones, one A, B, C, as well as alternative two, would result in residential and or business relocations. Alternatives two and three would result in more permanent impacts than the one alternatives. Noise, alternatives one A and B would provide, result in most noise impacts. One A would result in moderate impacts, and then alternatives two and three would have the fewest potential noise impacts. Bullet plane, we saw the highest level of bullet plane impact with alternatives one and C. The rest of them were bound to result in moderate or low levels of bullet plane impacts. And then some of those other considerations, consistency with local plans. Alternatives one A, one B, and one C were partially consistent. Alternatives two and three were found to be consistent with order vision. And then finally, project cost, alternatives two and three were found to be considerably lower cost compared to the one alternatives. And then alternative three would have the tallest cost at twenty, just a hair under thirty million, which is about 4.4 million less than alternative two. Next slide, please. So based on the evaluation, we ended up identifying alternative three as the preferred alternative. It is notable that alternative two did score relatively similar to alternative three. One of the major exceptions, though, was the required relocation of ten residences, whereas alternative three would not require any residential relocations. And again, just, the county received concurrence or approval from Federal Highway on this preferred alternative on September 3rd, 2024. Next slide, please. I'll turn it over to Andrew.
All right, thank you, Mary. So now we looked at, you know, where the car is going. The next part, you know, that we'd be looking at as we kind of get further along with everything is what could the actual roadway look like, the actual section? So here, we're just going to run through a few of the different types. So first one is showing a rural section, and what this shows is, you know, just having a ditch. What we do is, we still feel it's very important to have a trail, so we provide the trail farther out from the ditch, and then have twelve good driving lanes, eight foot shoulders, you know, resulting, what would you see on the screen of what that typical section looks like? Next slide, please. Okay, the urban typical section, this tightens things up a little bit more. When we're looking at this, you know, we definitely still see that trail, providing a minimum shoulder or boulevard, and then the two driving lanes with the shoulders as well. A lot of this will kind of be dictated a little bit by the speed that we're going for as well, and just overall cost. Obviously, urban section in general does cost a little bit more than the rural section, but the footprint is much smaller. The reason why the urban section gets a little bit more expensive is because of the curb and gutter and adding storm sewer and that sort of thing. Next slide, please. So this is a hybrid option, basically trying to tighten up that trail section and then having the ditch on the other side. This is looking north in a lot of cases, like we're here anticipating putting the trail on the west side. And this will decrease costs a little bit as we go along, and we might be seeing different options for different sections of the roadway depending on we're close to different properties and kind of the land use that we consider for a certain area. Next slide. So another thing that we're looking at too is possible mitigation strategies and different things that we can do. So we showed kind of the basic typical sections, but there are other things that we can do, either slow down traffic or create kind of, you know, more, you know, offset on the trail, that sort of thing. So here's an example of a parkway. What this does is it divides the traffic, and what we have here is curb and gutter on each side of, each side of the driver. And what that does is it does slow down traffic, it does take up a little bit more room by having the medians and everything. Plus, whenever you get to your intersections, you could have an issue of putting left turn lanes in, or it could be around all that sort of thing. But this is an option that has been used in different areas to kind of create more, and that parkway field, so things done a little bit. Next slide. The other thing too, again, when we're looking at the boulevard, this is a little bit wider boulevard than we saw, you know, in the urban concept, something that we consider. And what you're allowed to do then is put trees in there that really kind of create a separation between the roadway, the trail, and any homes that might be beyond the section. Next slide. The things that we're looking at too, just based on the noise study and everything, is sound walls. These, you know, are placed along, they provide not only mitigation for noise that you might be hearing from the roadway itself, but also does provide screening to the adjacent properties as well. Next slide. And then we also have burns of trees, and what this allows you to do again is providing a little bit of, you know, noise mitigation. The trees in this photo are not, you know, mature yet, but as they would grow, they would provide more of a screening effort there. And also providing, you know, for people's backyards, sidewalks, or whatever, having a urban relocation. All right, next slide, and I'll hand this over to Mary.
So just in terms of where we're at, next steps that we are taking, we are developing those environmental documents they talked about, so the federal, now programmatic categorical exclusion and the state environmental assessment worksheet. We, a part of that process is identifying impacts for that, those categories that are included in those documents. So it's going to be a longer list of things that we look at for that Federal Highway memo. We are also going to be determining what permits and mitigations will be required for the environmental impacts that we find. We anticipate completing drafts of these documents in early 2025. The categorical exclusion will require Federal Highway approval before we publish. The county will hold an open house after those documents are published. And so we are, again, are anticipating that to occur in 2025, early 2025, and there will be opportunity for a public meeting as well as a comment period. Final design would begin after those environmental documents are approved and the finally construction is scheduled for, at this time, 2026 and 2027. That's the, done with the presentation. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got one. We've been hearing different scenarios of how close the proposed roadway would be to adjacent houses. We've heard as close as fifteen feet to existing houses. With the alignment selected, do you have a better idea of how close the road could potentially be to existing houses?
Yeah, and we actually kind of researched a little bit with the help of your city engineer, Sean Herpes, I appreciate that, Sean. So looking with, maybe I've now, I'm kind of measuring from the edge of the travel lane. So the general answer here is that on average, we have over ninety feet from the edge of road to many, to the houses. Some are a little bit closer. So what we have is an average of fifty-eight feet from the setback from the edge of the house to the property line. Yep. And the closest one is seventeen feet. Even with that, we have an average of fifty-eight. And then our roadway is thirty-five feet from the edge of roadway to the property line. So that's sort of kind of gives us that average range of ninety feet. To kind of put it in perspective, so 26th Street, you're familiar with that road, we have twenty-five to thirty feet more proposed than the current. And we even have moved the side over a little bit if we had to, but twenty-five to thirty feet more than 26th Street has still those homes. Any other questions?
Ian, a parkway design, I assume that's the most expensive design of curb and gutter up to separate roadways?
Yeah, potentially, you know, depending on what you're doing with your language, but yeah, that, that design, depending what you're doing, if you're going to put storm sewer in the medians and everything too, there's some obstacles there, but yeah. Adding that much curb and gutter, I wouldn't necessarily think we'd do that for the whole area, but, you know, certain spots, it could be a treatment that you can do. But yeah, even your, your lengthless, because you do a plowing and all that, we don't want to narrow that out too much either. So that, that probably would be one of the more expensive options.
My question would be, going all the way from the north, all the way down to Eighteenth, lots of things in the case. Is the speed limit from one end to the other the same, or can vary in the middle? How does that work?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so what we'd be looking at is probably more design speed and how we handle it, because the actual speeds end up hitting set by the state through speed study and everything. But when we're looking at it, yeah, kind of the north area, potentially even the south area, although we kind of come to that T intersection, you know, Eighteenth right now, we'll have to curb that in. That the outskirts of it could be, you know, fifty to fifty-five, but really through that middle area, we're kind of looking at a forty to forty-five mile per hour design speed. Now, you know, the other thing we're looking, we have intersections, you know, located, and, you know, looking at some of the volumes of traffic, we may consider, you know, roundabouts could be an option, that's something to really kind of lower the speed limit potentially. Not speed limit, sorry, design speed, and, you know, likely that a speed limit would be posted at a lower speed. But that is something we'd be looking at as we kind of go through. The big thing about this is, you know, we have curb on the road, then, you know, kind of curb a little bit through the middle, but we have a lot of straight shots, so, you know, what do we do in those areas where we consider that we would like to have a lower speed?
So this is the first time we've seen this, so it's a lot to take in right now. Could you go back through the schedule moving forward a little bit? What's going to happen next?
Sure, so as you mentioned, we hit, it was fixed to have to get through those three points with FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, to confer, especially on that preferred alternative. That just occurred here in early September. So what we're doing now is preparing the environmental documents. So again, we're preparing one federal environmental document called a categorical exclusion, and then the state of Minnesota document as well.
What kind of timeframe is that?
Yep, so we're anticipating finishing goes up over the winter is what we're, are looking for. And then, again, we have to, because one of them, we do need to get Federal Highway to sign off on that, they do need to approve that. So sometimes the schedule can drag a little bit because they get a thirty-day review period, that kind of thing. But our current timeline is to finish that up this winter, and then once those are published, now in the, in the world for public review and comment, we would anticipate holding a public hearing. We would, and we would do that, I shouldn't say we anticipate, that would have occurred. So I would say this winter or this spring, at least, is what we're looking at at this point in time.
And do you take comment there?
We take comment there, yep, we do. And then, once that environmental process is wrapped up, we are anticipating that would probably occur sometime in the summer, spring, summer of 2025. Then it moves into the design phase, so Andrew and his crew would take over, and construction at this point is capable to start in 2026.
Correct, and, you know, one of the things when developing plans, you know, we will have a bridge on the project. So there's a lot of MINDOT review at a certain point as well, going through that federal process of local plan production. So yeah, as soon as we kind of know what we're building, what we're doing, then kind of diving into that, you know, what's going to be built and when and how, you know, basing up it on that sort of.
I hate to bring up the railroad, but has that been discussed?
You have to be a counsel.
Sorry, Paul.
Exactly, I didn't, Paul's been kind of talking mostly to the railroad.
Yeah, we have started conversations with them already and supporting large agreement also. Let's hopefully, we'll see if they operate and get this ready for us by 26 here.
So I'm curious, you mentioned a potential roundabout. The school district does own property along the proposed Point Ninth Avenue. Would the roundabout go in before that school would determine to go there, or would the road be tore up again to put a roundabout in at a later date?
I think we would put in, and, you know, we haven't gone into too much detail of this, but I don't foresee that we would be trying to rip something up, that we kind of have a good idea of potential traffic generators, you know. It's hard because, you know, it's easy, most of the time, you're going to, we're going to put a roundabout here, we're going to signal here. You can actually look at actual turning movements here, you don't know if we're out there yet. You know, land use could change, not land use, but, you know, the generators when they come in. But we do our best to identify, we definitely don't want to put a roundabout, that's unjustified, but kind of looking at those traffic numbers and trying to see. You know, kind of mentioning that the roundabouts, you know, tend to be something that we are trying to reduce speed, and that would be the control rather than, you know, putting in turn lanes. And that's what we'd be doing otherwise, putting in turn lanes and having it set up for that at all the intersections, as we know that, you know, those are probably going to be needed either way, so. Yeah, because it's easier to slow traffic down with a roundabout, you put the signs up.
Correct.
Yeah, correct, so what we want to strategically place, you know, we want to share that location that, you know, is has all through traffic on the turn. So strategically, we have to look at that, we don't even want that, as we kind of keep moving along with the legal and designing, so.
Okay, thank you.
So this time, the environmental mapping is moving forward, and we're here with a status quo, as you all have learned, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. I, we really don't have, we're kind of in that process of, we're getting through those documents. So until those documents are published, yeah, they're, I anticipate there being a lot of updates, you know.
Biggest part of that document is going through all the mitigations that we have to go on. Now, we have identified preferred alternative area, and Andrew here are going to be going through the, all the details, all the different impacts that are identified. Everything from all of the C impacts, the socioeconomic, environmental impacts, the floodlands, we'll be doing in-depth noise analysis and so forth. And archaeology, we're already contacting landowners, they get archaeology studies done, and that's going through right now. So that's some of the big timeline right now, is completing all those different analysis as part of the environmental document, so adding marks to that.
I think you covered it, it is just a lot of different components, you know, now looking at the specific work, or exactly what we're dealing with, floodlands under line. Punishment and noise increases are big, you know, components of a very detailed process in general, you know, how we do have, you know, some properties that are impacted.
Other questions?
I have one more question, Paul, can I ask you a question about an unrelated project? My understanding here?
Sure.
I had somebody ask me when they're going to do the Eighteenth Street roundabout, finishing up that third leg, is that this year, next year?
I was hoping to bring up this all here, but still working on that road agreement. We thought we were almost at the finish line, we're still waiting on the right-of-way easement. Somebody in Kansas City is trying to get those documents to us yet. And they promised me, that was going to beat me a week ago, but that was a week ago, and that's, yeah, the railroad has got its own timeline. So honestly, I think it's probably going to be finished until next, next spring, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything, we've got all these folks involved, the federal and state and everything, is there anything in your expertise, if you can see, that would pop up in these catexes that state EAW that will derail this, would make this a non-preferred road? What would that be?
I, I mean, I think the things and all that, you know, they found, archaeological, which you're in, so, I think that's, given that it, there is farm, and, you know, it's all going to turn up quite a bit. Most of the things, I think, are mitigation type deals. I don't think anything can be real at that time, but that one, I guess.
Right, I think the, when we selected the evaluation criteria for evaluating the range of alternatives, we tried to pick some of those categories, environmental categories, that would possibly turn up, or would turn up some of those things. So yeah, some of, you know, the bigger impact is going to, department is going to be, you know, fairly heavily impacted. But at this rate, from what we know, based on what we know, there's not anything that would, like you said, derail, that would, yeah, in terms of environmental categories, that kind of thing.
Could we get a copy or shot of this PowerPoint? I guess this is the first time we've seen this, so it'd be nice to stay a little more in detail.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with that. That wasn't included on the website, was it, Andrew?
The PowerPoint?
Yeah.
PowerPoint is not, no, the documents are on the site, the site.
Would that be something that could post?
Yep, for sure.
I think, provided a very similar presentation, the county.
I think, because I provided a very similar presentation in the county and one here, it might be good to have.
Obviously, yeah, we'll get that up. And we'll, in charge of our real looking gate to deal with that.
Great, thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, last week, we did, Andrew and Mary did present this to the county board here, give them updates. Now that we've addressed the updates with you and the board here, are going to be focusing on trying to get some updates off to the public. We're working on a newsletter. And like Andrew did say, we are, we got published, these three concurrents analysis are pretty extensive, exhaustive detailing, and great detail of how we came up with the alternatives, how we came up with the purpose of need and the evaluation criteria that we are using. And then, yeah, how we evaluated all seven options that we're looking at. And we'll go into the details of Mary, briefly summarized a few here, but yeah, the third memo, the six and one pages of some great detailed information there. So that's available now. But sorry, like I said, we are working on a newsletter, Brian, so they're helping all of that. And we'll get some updates, kind of summarize all this on our website. And as often, website is the best place to find most current information on the project. So we'll make that available for the, for the, so what the notes going on. Yeah, that's kind of why I want that PowerPoint thing. It's a nice, not watered down, but a good summary of a very sensitive, sixty-one page document, so.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Thank you for the update.